Right. Good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to the 28th of April Georgetown Council Meeting. This is going to be a meeting where, as a collective, we're going to be learning a few new tricks in terms of meeting procedures on account of the extraordinary COVID-19 circumstances. But I want to thank everybody for the trial runs that we've conducted and to the debate we've had in terms of how to conduct these meetings. I just want to reinforce to everybody that this is a learning experience. If any of these proceedings do not work, we're more than happy to accommodate alternate views and to try something different next time. So we'll learn and we'll get better through a process of continuous improvement. So firstly, let's start our meeting with our acknowledgement of country, and that reads, "The Georgetown Council pays its respect to the traditional and original owners of the land in which we meet, the elders past, present and emerging, and we pay respect to those that have passed before us, and acknowledge today's Tasmanian Aboriginal people who are the custodians of this land." Present today is obviously myself, Greg Keys of the mayor. We have Deputy Mayor Tim Harris. We have Chris Barrowclough. We have councillor Heather Barwick. Councillor Heather Barwick has elected not to use her video feed, so she will be the blue square on your screen for those who are following the recorded minutes. Councillor Justine Brooks, g'day, Justine. Councillor Greg Dawson. Councillor Winston Mason. Councillor Andrew Micalletto. And councillor Peter Parks. Looking fantastic there, Peter. Good work. We also have an attendance from the staff today. General Manager Shane Power. General Manager for Services and Finance, Cheryl Hyde. The manager of Works and Infrastructure, David Richardson. I don't know if it's David there on the screen. There he is, David. Hello, David. We have manager of Development and Environment, which is Rex, right? That's Rex. G'day. We have the manager of Livable and Connected Communities, Megan Bennett. And we have the manager of People, Performance and Governance, Brent Dyer. Apologies and leave our absence. We have none today. Okay, we're moving on to the first item, which is item 2.1, which is the confirmation of the ordinary meeting held on the 24th of March. Do I have, by show of raising your hand, or if you're Heather, by using the raised hand emoticon, can I please have a mover? We have a mover in Deputy Mayor Harris. Do I have a second, please? A second in councillor Parks, thank you very much. Deputy Mayor Harris.
Nothing further to add at this stage.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Councillor Parks.
Nothing, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Do I have any questions for councillor Barwick?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I speak down.
Apologies to interrupt you there, councillor Barwick. I'm not quite sure why, because I know that the screen is showing you as having your mute off, but you're not coming through on the audio record. Can one of us assist councillor Barwick, please?
Is it plugged in correctly?
We'll probably do this throughout the meeting. It is a new behaviour, so we'll just learn a few new things. Be patient, please.
Am I on? Am I on?
There we go. That seems to be good.
Is it?
Yes, I can hear councillor Barwick now.
Okay.
No, hang on a second. Sorry, that might be somebody else's audio channel. The general manager is assisting. Social distancing notwithstanding.
Hello.
Yep, that's it.
There we go. I think we've got you.
Too loud. Is that better? Can you hear me?
Very loud, but it is working.
It's too loud, isn't it?
Just put your microphone down a little bit.
How's that? Is that better?
That sounds workable.
Okay. Well, Mr. Chairman, after all of that, I'm going to speak against the approval of the minutes, number 03220 to 05320. I cannot accept the approval of the minutes as they are presented. The reason is, there was an adjournment not recorded in our minutes, a motion that was put and not recorded, voting for and against motions not recorded on who voted which way and how. All the under regulation, audio regulation of the local government meeting regulations 333, it says, "If a discrepancy between the minutes and an audio recording of the meeting is noticed, the council at the next appropriate meeting is to review the audio recording and either confirm that the minutes as amended to be a true record. Mister Chairman, as we receive the minutes, why are they not an attachment to this agenda? They are part of our business today, and they are not an attachment to our agenda like they used to be. I have excluded minute number 05720 because that is a confidential minute, and I cannot see why we have to approve it at the beginning of this session and have to approve it when we go into closed session. I just feel that these minutes have to, according to regulation 321E of the legislation states, the general manager is to ensure the meeting accurately records any motions moved during the meeting. And I believe that we are alerted to the fact that these minutes are not correct, and I have listened to the tape. And according to 333 of the local government meeting procedures, the minutes are to have what actually is on the tape of the meeting of the day. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Barwick. There were multiple points made there, but I also believe there was a question that was presented. And assuming you posed it to me, but I'm going to take the liberty of passing it to the general manager to respond. General Manager Shane Power.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for bringing that to our attention, councillor Barwick. What my recommendation to council would be at this point is that we wouldn't be reviewing the audio for the minutes, given the complexity of the environment in which we are meeting today, or which councils meeting today. But in fact, that we would defer any discrepancies that councillor Barwick has identified to take on notice and report back to the following council meeting, as we have done in the past.
So just to clarify then, general manager, so you still believe that there's sufficient accuracy that we can vote on the motion as it stands, but then we'll take the questions on notice and respond back to them at the next council meeting? Is that correct?
Sorry, no. What I'm saying, if council feels that there is sufficient discrepancy raised by councillor Barwick, that the minutes be deferred to the following meeting of council, once we've had an opportunity to review the tape and review exactly the number, the varied number of points that councillor Barwick has raised. And I note that she has her, councillor Barwick has her hand up once again.
Thank you. Councillor Barwick.
It's, can you hear me?
Yes.
It's just that, to refer back to item 333 of the local government meeting procedure regulation that states, "Audio recording of minutes. If after the minutes of a meeting have been confirmed as a true record of a discrepancy between the minutes and an audio recording of that meeting or part of that meeting is noticed, the council at the next appropriate meeting is to review the audio recording and either confirm that the minutes are a true record or amend the minutes to reflect the audio recording, and then confirm the minutes as amended to be a true record at the next meeting." That is what I'm bringing up for council's attention, that we will no doubt be bringing this back for confirmation to be a true record, but I don't believe they are the same as what the audio recording says. And yeah, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Barwick. Councillor Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to ask the question as to how long the councillor has known about this and why it wasn't notified before the meeting.
I think that's a fair question, and you are allowed to question another councillor as far as I'm aware. Please correct me if anyone has a contrary view to this. Councillor Barwick, would you care to respond to the deputy mayor's question?
Mister Chairman, there's nowhere in here that it states in the meeting procedures that a councillor has to advise of the errors of what went on at that meeting. We had a letter sent to us from a ratepayer who wrote to us in good faith to say there were mistakes in it. Okay, so then everyone should have listened to that tape, and had they had listened to that tape, they'd be as horrified as I was, what went on. There was an adjournment called, it was never recorded. There were, I put a motion forward. The motion lost, but it didn't recur. Who voted which way? There are so many mistakes in that tape that are not reflected in our agenda, you know. When I reread and listened to that tape after seeing that correspondence that we've got from Mister Nielsen, I just wonder why we're suddenly deciding to change everything, but that's another issue for a bit further on in the meeting. I just think that we need ourselves, not just Heather Barwick that reads and checks everything out, but everybody, if they've got a problem, do it too. But I don't have to bring it to the table, I'm sorry.
Councillor Dawson, you have a question?
Yes, with the minutes, are they expected to be verbatim of what transpired or a recollection of what occurred?
I'm going to, again, assuming that's a question to the general manager through the chair. General Manager Shane Power.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I can only speak in general context without having the facility to be able to review the audio of the minutes of the meeting in which councillor Barwick is specifically referring to. But no, is the answer, that everything that is transpired across the audio recording does not need to be recorded verbatim. And the reason for that is that, for starters, we have individual councils with microphones that are engaged for the purposes of debate and speaking, but we often get a lot of background commentary that is out of line or not intended to be incorporated into the actual debate itself at that particular point in time, if that makes sense.
Thank you. Councillor Barwick, I noticed that you raised your hand again. Any further questions?
It's just a comment. I didn't use the word verbatim at all, because I know better than to do that, but it does state in the audio recording of the minutes that they have the minutes to be a true record or amend the minutes to reflect the audio recording, and that's then confirm them as being amended and correct. So that's out of the local government legislation. Thank you.
And I'll just remind the councillor that, in terms of the meeting proceedings provisions, each councillor has an opportunity to speak to a motion once, but you may ask as many questions as you like, and that one straddles both. So it's both a statement as well as a question. So I've recorded you as already having spoken to the motion, so just be cautious, please. Just make sure we have a balanced debate. Are there any other speakers, either for or against the motion? There are no speakers either for or against the motion, or that. I'll pass back to Deputy Mayor Harris, your right of reply.
No, I don't think I'll go any further to add. I think it's all been said.
Thank you very much. Now, we're going to vote on this motion and in this meeting, and while we use this digital platform in a slightly different way to what we've done in the past, just to simplify the process of recording everybody's vote. So I'm first going to ask if there are any abstaining voters, anybody who's not going to be voting, which I strongly just hope no one is doing.
I am speaking against and voting against, Mister Chair.
That's not an abstention.
That's not an abstention. So, okay, councillor Mason, are you going to abstain from voting?
I wasn't voting, Major. I can't vote.
Okay, so councillor Mason is abstaining, so that's the first vote. Now, I'm going to ask all of those who are voting against the motion, please raise your hand. I'm recording councillor Brooks, and I'm recording councillor Barwick, I'm recording councillor Barwick, and I'm recording councillor Dawson. And by extraction, therefore, we have those in favour being councillor Keizer, councillor Micalletto, councillor Parks, councillor Harris. And on my vote, that means that motion is carried. One, two, three, four. Hang on a second. We don't have an absolute majority. So we have one.
Mayor, the abstention is a no vote, and the Winston Mason failed to vote, so that is also against.
Thank you very much. You're quite correct, Deputy Mayor Harris. In that case, the motion is not carried. So Louise, if you can just record, we have councillor Mason who abstained, we have against, we have councillor Barwick, councillor Barwick, councillor Dawson, councillor Brooks. Four, we had councillor Keizer, councillor Parks, councillor Harris and councillor Micalletto. Motion is not carried.
If I may, Mister Mayor, and I noticed that Deputy councillor Tim Harris has his hand raised, but just to remind all councillors that if you have got the shared screen application before, you can see how the governance executive officer is recording the voting for and against for confirmation purposes. So you'll see that written there, just assist you in your navigating through each of the motions.
Moving on to item three, late items, and there are nil.
Sorry, Mayor, can I, sorry, can I interrupt? There'll be no moving on as the minutes haven't been passed, we no longer have a meeting to attend. And I thank you for your attendance, and I'll see you next week.
No, that's technically not correct. I think we ratified that the last meeting, councillor Harris, that we can continue. And there's provision in the act that we can then subsequently ratify the meeting. So, item three, there are late items, and there are nil. That moves us to public question time. Again, just bear with me, things have changed a little bit for this meeting, so I'm going to just quickly read out some of our new procedures. We have hands there from councillor Barwick. Councillor Barwick.
Mister Chairman, this is the first time, and this is also different, and having read this document, I've noticed that this is the first time that I've seen that these questions, if accepted, will be published in the agenda, or if not accepted, will be accepted or not accepted. What I want to know is, how many questions have we been given for this at the moment? Yeah, but it won't, I'm just asking, how many questions have we received to go to this meeting today? That's my question. The first time we've done it this way. So this is the only reason why I'm asking the question.
Fair question. I'm going to answer it somewhat differently. We're going to first say which questions were not accepted, so we'll point to those ones specifically by exception. So through the chair to the general manager.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. So we received one question that was rejected based on the nature of the question, and correspondence has been sent back to that individual informing them as to why the question was not accepted. I'm happy to circulate that to councils post this meeting. But yeah, so we can inform you why that wasn't accepted, and as I said, the individual has been informed. And the second one was a late question, which missed the notification period, which I believe you've got with you, Mister Mayor, to read out.
I do. Thank you very much. I will still be reading to that, because we'll be effectively taking that on notice. So due to restrictions in place during the COVID-19 pandemic and the closure of the ordinary council meetings as enabled through the COVID-19 Disease Emergency Act of 2020, public question time will be conducted in the following manner. Questions with notice, so up to two questions per person with notice can be submitted by email to council@georgetown.tes.gov.au by Monday 5pm, seven days prior to the ordinary meeting. These questions, if accepted, will be published in the agenda. Questions without notice, up to two questions per person without notice can be submitted by email to council@georgetown.tes.gov.au by Monday 5pm, one day prior to the ordinary meeting. These questions, if accepted, will be submitted to the chair in order of acceptance. Questions with or without notice will be read out by the chair at the meeting and will be answered or taken on notice. These questions will be recorded in council's minutes, and an electronic recording of the ordinary meeting will be available on council's website for public viewing. So that's a process which we're going to be following. And the first question on notice, which is published in item 4.2 on the agenda, is a question from Mister Nielsen from Georgetown. His question reads, "My question relates to the minutes of the March 2020 ordinary meeting, item 10.4, the gifting of council land. We're listening to the audio was an embarrassment to those who appreciate proper governance. It would appear that there were multiple breaches of local government. The meeting proceedings, procedure of regulation 2015, I in particular asked, why wasn't the adjournment, as called by the chair and recorded on audio, reported in the minutes along with the time that the adjournment commenced and ceased? And why was it reported that councillor Barwick left the meeting only to return after he had seconded a motion? And our response is, it's the role of councillors to review, consider and confirm the content of minutes as outlined in the local government meeting procedures regulations of 2015. Councillors should not be subject to public pressure or influence in the conduct of this responsibility. At the time of submission, there are no confirmed minutes from which to assess your answer or answer your questions from. If you believe that there has been a breach of an act in the conduct of an ordinary council meeting, you're encouraged to refer the specific nature of the alleged breach to the Local Government Division of the Department of Premier and Cabinet." And we have public question time. And the only public question we have is the ASU one, is that correct? That's the ASU one, right? Okay, so the Australian Sisters Union, as you know, is the union that represents many of the council staff. There are three questions posed in a letter. This is a letter that is addressed to all councils, as I understand, so such there will be a response, a sector-based response, but I will read all three questions, we will record those in a minute, and we will take them on notice. So the first question is, can the general manager provide assurances to the Georgetown Council's employees that no employees will have their employment terminated as a result of COVID-19, and the council will prioritise the maintenance of employment of each of their employees in any budgetary decisions moving forward? That's question one. Question two is, can the general manager assure employees of Georgetown Council that the management team will enter into consultation before any major changes are implemented in the workforce or workplace? And question three, can the general manager provide a guarantee that all possible alternative duties will be explored before considering standing employees down, including things that are usually outside of council's core business, but which assists the community with getting through and recovering from COVID-19? The union can provide further details and suggestions around this matter. So thank you to Aaron for submitting your question. As I said, your questions are taken on notice. We have item 4.4, which is questions on notice from councils, from, and this is from, right. So basically, you can read the response, and it is as stands in the minutes. I'm not going to reread that with everyone in, everyone present. As noted, 4.4. 4.5 is a response to a question from previous public question time from Mister Robinson. You recall Mister Robinson attended the last meeting in person, it was his first time, I think, in a, in a meeting. The response is as stands, if you can review that, please. 4.5. 4.5 as well, we have, again, a response to Mrs. Sue Nielsen, again, as stands from the general manager, thank you, Shane. And then following the page, also, one from Mister Graham Nielsen, also as stands. Concludes question time. Declarations of interest, we note, item six, the declaration from the general manager as presented, thank you very much. And 6.5, presented as such. Items, on number seven items, as a planning authority, there are nil. Item eight, planning and development, again, there are nil. That leads us to item nine, which is items relating to works and infrastructure. And item 9.1, for the players with the printed pack, it is on page 14. So 9.1 relates to the 10-year road renewal and road upgrade programme. I'll point everybody to the recommendation that is on page 22 of the printed pack. And with that, I'm going to ask for a mover, please, by show of hand. Have you, sorry, councillor Harris. So councillor Harris is our mover. Do I have a second, please? Councillor Harris.
Yes, I'd like to move item two and four of the recommendation. Four, because it covers three as well, anyway, I feel in that line, so endorse the 10-year road upgrade programme as presented in attachment C. And note that road renewal and upgrade programmes can be subject to change over time, and one of those causes is listed in item three, which doesn't really need to be repeated. Note that road renewal and upgrade programmes are subject to financial constraints. So I think two and four covers what we need to.
Mister Mayor, from my resolution, or the recommendation as presented by officers, item one specifically refers to road renewal programme being attachments A and B. And item two in the recommendation is for a separate programme, being the 10-year road upgrade programme. I just want to make that brought to the intention of council, because I believe councillor Harris may have missed that point in the recommendation. So as the recommendation now stands, you'll effectively be missing one of the programmes.
I would have thought that the 10-year programme covers both, does it not? All right, I'll retract my movement of motion.
Councillor Harris, I'm assuming then you're also withdrawing as being the mover? Is that, have I got that right?
Yeah, I just said that.
So that case, I'm going to ask, do I have So that case, I'm going to ask, do I have a mover for the motion as it stands? Councillor Mason, I saw as being the original, first person to show his hands. Councillor Mason, thank you.
Point of order. Point of order, Mr. Chair. Previously, Mr. Paul Goshet.
You've disappeared councillor Barwick.
And? They muted me.
Councillor Barwick, you've muted again. Again, let's just all be patient. Now councillor Micalletta, I noted that you moved councillor Harris's original motion.
Thank you.
Drawn.
And that was my point of order, Mr. Chairman, that you had to get Mr. Micalletta, councillor Micalletta, as well as councillor Harris, to remove his some support for that motion.
Since the motion is withdrawn, I'm going to assume that that's a given.
Oh.
So we now have a mover in councillor Mason. Do I have a second for the motion as it stands? Thank you, councillor Dawson is our second. So we will, I'll move to councillor Mason, please, as the mover.
So I'd like to move the officer's recommendation, a 10-year plan. It's a long period of time to plan anything, let alone roads and bridges. And this document is well put together. So I've no hesitation in moving one, two, three and four of the officer's recommendation.
Thank you councillor Mason, councillor Dawson.
I agree 100% with councillor Mason's comments. Council, as encouraged by councillor Barwick over the years, we've actually looked forward to get this 10-year road programme. And it's easy now to identify all the projects and the time when we can expect. I'm 100% supportive of the motion.
Thank you councillor Dawson. Do I have any speakers against the motion? Councillor Barwick.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm a bit slow moving across and move myself. Look, I don't support this as it stands. I hear what councillor Dawson's saying. We've got a list of road programmes going from the year 2020 to the year 2029. When I've asked for a road, 10-year road programme, I don't want to know how much it's going to cost or what their roads. I want the roads as priority from one to whatever. We had a workshop the other day that talked about Dow Rimpell Road was a major one priority. But when you look at these programmes, the Dow Rimpell Roads over a four-year period. And what it says in our budgets for Dow Rimpell Road and where we're looking at these programmes is to investigate payment strict. It's to always investigate, it's not setting it down in a concrete that that is what we are going to do. It's a bit like looking at the East Arm Road has priority over the Glen Road. Now, to me, that's just unbelievable because East Arm Road is a log truck road and virtually is used by log trucks to come into a property on Dow Rimpell Road. The Glen Road, which has a school bus, and I've thought about that for years, is second best to an East Arm Road. And the costing for the East Arm Road that's on these paperworks, if you look at the costing of that compared to the Glen Road, there is a bit of difference, but the safety of the kids is still another issue. And the 10-year rolling programme, I want number one to be sitting there so that every year we can say, well, where are we with number one? Why is it still sitting there with no action taken? So I don't support the programme, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers for the proposal? Councillor Brooks.
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, just a compliment really towards Shane and David and their team to say that's some really comprehensive work. That would have taken a lot of effort to pull all of that together. And I'd just like to pass on, well done.
Thank you very much councillor Brooks. Do I have any other speakers against the motion? Yes, councillor Micalletta.
I wasn't actually speaker against it, I was actually, put my hand up when you were still in the fore. And I'd just like to emulate what councillor Brooks has said. But also question, just going back to the previous motion councillor Harris put up. Now, I'm not sure how this procedure is meant to operate. But you asked for a mover for the officer's recommendations. And you've got a mover of councillor Harris. And then you asked for a second, which I seconded. And then when councillor Harris was asked to speak, he made a different, put a different motion forward to what's written down here, which I presumed that I was seconding what was written down here. So how can you ask for a second if the motion's going to be changed?
Thank you councillor Micalletta. It's actually councillor Harris withdrew the motion that he had put forward. So at that point, it lapses, as well as the position of being a second for a withdrawn motion. Because he had, he decided to only move points two and point four. So that was killed off when he withdrew it. Then councillor Mason moved the motion as it stands, as it's written in the pack, items one, two, three and four. And at that stage, I called for a mover that reflected that, the motion as it stood. And we recorded councillor Dawson. So apologies for any confusion. Anything you want to add to the motion as it stands, item one, two, three and four?
No further say.
Thank you. I would very much like to speak for the motion. And firstly, I believe that this is a quantum leap for this council in terms of the level of science and the level of rigor in which we apply non-emotive, objective-based decision-making towards the fundamental, most important and highly valued asset in the council's asset programme. And I again would like to mirror what councillor Brooks has said. There is a degree of rigor, science and analysis that is being taken against all of these assets, both in terms of what the state's compliance criteria are, the actual physical audited and inspected condition, as well as the objectified traffic movements and loads placed on these assets, all of which are summed up to prioritise the capital works that will best serve the collective community. And I think that this is a truly outstanding piece of work. And I think that this is a way that we will move these collective road assets forward for our community in a significantly better way. So truly well done. I'll have a final call for any further speakers before we, councillor Harris.
It's good that you actually saw my waving hand eventually. But thank you. I would also like to congratulate David and Shane and the team we have in infrastructure. They do do a wonderful job. I actually thought that the 10-year plan would cover the shorter plan too, but obviously not as well. But yes, I think it's a, it's a very good use of the consultative process that we've been through with the people that we pay big money to. And it's a better use of the money if it goes over a 10-year period. And I congratulate David on, on the results of it, thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, with that, I'll return to councillor Mason, who is our mover, write of reply. Anything you want to add?
Yes, some good commentary around all that. Some of councillor Barwick's concerns should be covered even now, hoping for the officer's recommendation in that motion. And for that, Shane, and that, we could mean that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you councillor Mason. Okay, as we did the last time, I'm first going to ask, are there any abstaining voters? There are none. I will then ask for all of those who are against the motion, please, by show of hands. And I'm recording councillor Barwick as being against the motion. Therefore, the motion is carried H21. Councillors in favour is councillor Keizer, councillor Mason, councillor Brooks, councillor Dawson, councillor Barakoff, councillor Harris, councillor Parks and councillor Micalletta. Thank you very much. Thank you. What's the next item in the agenda? We have corporate services and finance, item 10.1, which is the loan council allocation for 2020, 2021. And for those who are on the printed pack, I will point to the officer's recommendation on page 26. And I'm going to ask, do we have a mover for the motion as it stands? Councillor Brooks is our mover. Do I have a second? Councillor Barakoff, sorry. Sometimes when I'm writing, you'll notice I'm not looking at the screen. So just wait for my eyes to return, but thank you. Councillor Brooks.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I quite like how the report's just three or four pages long and it's written in simply, you know, simple terms for anyone to be able to understand. Essentially, the money is only going to be borrowed if we are successful in getting $750,000 grant. For me, it's a no-brainer. We've had situations before where we've received grants for bridges, particularly for a bridge I can think of, and not had the funds and had to send the money back. And I would not like to be part of a situation like that again whilst I represent the council. So that's the reason why I'm supporting it.
Thank you councillor Brooks, councillor Barakoff.
I agree with what councillor Brooks has commented, I've nothing further to add.
Thank you very much. Do you have any speakers against the motion? No speakers against the motion. Councillor Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not actually speaking against the motion, but I'm speaking, well, maybe I am, against actually borrowing to do that when there is the threat that we're paying $750,000 for a building around the road at the old RSL. I'm not sure exactly what the figure is, but it'd be somewhere close to that, I suppose. If we can pay for this out of our existing funds.
Point of order, Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, those conversations are in confidence. So if I could.
Oh, I apologize.
Just bring that to the attention of council, that this report is not dealing with any of those particular items. This report is simply dealing to authorize officers to notify the Department of Treasury of council's intent to potentially draw on loans. It doesn't speak specifically to what those loans might be to fund, particularly in the point number two, which is in response to COVID-19.
I apologize for making that comment, but I do like the potential to draw on the money when we might not have to, then we might not need to. Thank you.
I have raised hand from councillor Barwick.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, I would like to ask a question because it states here nominate potential projects. For, I'm just wondering, what projects are we nominating for that $1 million over the three-year period? If you could tell me that.
Through the chair to the general manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There are a number of projects that are currently being scoped up, not just by Georgetown Council, but in fact by most councils across the state, specifically in response to the premier's $150 million loan programme for councils to respond to the COVID-19 crisis. Any and each of those projects, once they have reached a point of maturity, will be presented to council of consideration. And just to reiterate that any decision to draw down on any loan will also be subject to a future decision of council.
Excellent.
So from the comment that the general manager has just made, we're asking council to borrow $1 million and we really don't know what we're going to be doing with that $1 million. And yeah, thank you.
So again, councillor Barwick, I'm going to view that as a statement, not as a question. So I've recorded you as having spoken to the motion. Thank you very much. Are there any other speakers to the motion? There are none, so I'll return to councillor Brooks, who's the mover, write of reply.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have anything additional to add to the conversation.
Thank you very much. Do I have any abstaining voters? There are none. Those opposed to the motion, please show by raise of hand. I'm recording councillor Barwick as being against the motion. Therefore, the motion is carried H21. Those in favour of the motion are councillor Keizer, councillor Mason, councillor Brooks, councillor Dawson, councillor Barakoff, councillor Harris, councillor Parks and councillor Micalletta. Motion is carried.
Mayor, councillor Dawson's not there.
He's just turned his camera off.
No, Mr. Mayor, I can confirm. And if you look to the minutes, as they're being recorded, councillor Dawson has left a meeting at 1:42, it was recorded into minutes he left, so.
Thank you very much councillor Parks, that was accurate. So let's just make sure that we reflect. So councillor Dawson left the meeting at 1:30. I think that's reflected by prior agreement. So the actual vote in terms of this motion was against is councillor Barwick. The remaining seven members of the chamber excluding councillor Dawson were in favour of the motion. So Louise Long, that's reflected in the minutes for accuracy, please. Thank you. Item 11, Community and Development Services, there are nil. Item 12, matters of involvement with the mayor, any questions? It was a bit of a slow month, given the circumstances. I think everyone can see that. All right, I'll then ask for a mover for the matters of involvement as they stand. I have councillor Barakoff and councillor Mason. So councillor Barakoff, you're the mover. Councillor Mason, you're the second. Councillor Barakoff.
Nothing further to add.
Councillor Mason.
Nothing to add, Mayor, thank you.
Any questions either for or against from the council? Councillor Barakoff, write of reply if you require it.
It's been a busy month, well done, Mayor.
Or do I have any abstaining voters? By show of hands, anybody voting against the motion? The motion is carried unanimously, councillor Keizer, councillor Mason, councillor Brooks, councillor Barakoff, councillor Barwick, councillor Harris, councillor Micalletta, and recording that councillor Dawson is not in the room. Thank you.
I don't think you mentioned my name there, but that's all good.
I didn't, I'm sorry, Peter.
I am here.
You know, it's so much easier when I can look around the table and I can see you all sitting there. I'll do that again, thanks for calling it out, I appreciate it. All right. Item 13 is items from the general manager and 13.1 is council workshops. There as they stand, we have a number that we're reflecting, but all on Tuesday the 25th, Tuesday the 10th of March. We have Tuesday the 24th of March, Tuesday the 21st of April as well, recorded. And for that, again, is, I just need a mover, have a mover for, from councillor Mason is our mover. And our second is councillor Parks. Councillor Mason.
I just put my hand up to notify you that I wasn't at the meeting on 25th of February. I did notify earlier, but it's too late to change it in the document, so I won't be moving.
I had mine a hand up for the same reason.
Thank you.
I wasn't actually moving the motion, I was just notifying the meeting that I wasn't at the February 25th workshop.
Very much. And councillor Parks, since you also raised your hand, was at the same point you wanted to?
Well, in that case, Mayor, I'm happy to move those records with those amendments. Well, in that case, Mayor, I'm happy to move those records with those amendments.
Thank you very much, councillor Parks. Do I have a secondaire? Councillor Baraklov is our secondaire. Councillor Parks.
Just to table those documents, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Baraklov.
Yeah, likewise, I agree with that.
Thank you very much. Any speakers for or against noting the amendments? Councillor Barwick.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, time I slide across there to turn me on. The under the regulations, agenda on agendas eight to C, I just question why, again, are we putting the 25th of February, the 10th of March and the the 10th of March documents back into this agenda when we received those at the last council meeting? We've already passed them, received them, and now they're back in here again. I have the minutes here with me of that meeting. And I can't understand how they've come back in here again because they don't need to be there the second time. So that needs to be amended. And also under item eight of the legislation two, it says the agenda of an ordinary council meeting is to provide for, but it's not limited to, the date and purpose of any council workshop held since the last meeting, which then left me to question the 24th of March is today. Now, this is a workshop we're having on the day of our meeting. And I'm not sure if that one should be in here as well, but I sorry.
Yeah, we
The twenty four, yeah, that's okay, that's fine. But the 24th of March was our council meeting day, was the 24th of March last month. And it says council meetings prior to the meeting of the the next council meeting. That's when you put them up. So some of these no longer should be in this agenda because we, why do we receive them twice?
Thank you, councillor Barwick. And I'm going to again assume that that's mostly a question through the chair to the general manager. Mr. General Manager.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'm not sure I really have a response to councillor Barwick's particular question, other than to say that the recommendation is simply seeking that council receives what's within the report. I'm happy to, you know, have further discussions at other workshops and how these reports are presented into the future. But regardless if they've been received previously or not, I'm not sure it has a great bearing on any decision that's being asked of council today, given that the recommendation is simply to receive the officer's report.
Thank you. I'll come to councillor Mason, but also just point to the practicalities of reporting a agenda where we have a practice where prior to each council meeting, we have a workshop. So in terms of being absolutely certain what agenda items will be dealt with, it's practically impossible to include meetings that are held, workshop meetings that are held on the day of a council meeting. The timing simply doesn't stand out since you're publishing your meeting minutes up to seven days prior to a meeting. So again, while I can't say with absolute certainty, I'm comfortable that the act, being rather pragmatic on almost all fronts, would accommodate that impossibility in terms of timing. So I don't have a particular problem with it. Any other, and we had a question from councillor Mason.
Where's he gone?
Can you start from the beginning, please? Thank you.
I didn't actually move the motion there. I was just going to plead a councillor Park to move the motion.
No, I'm No, so it still stands. So councillor Parks is the mover, councillor Baraklov is the secondaire. Again, I'm comfortable with the motion as it stands. But again, that's the view of the council. If you don't want to accept them and you want to move them to workshop, then that's fine. That's, you know, that's collective will. Do you have any other speakers for or against the motion? Councillor Brooks.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm really just clarifying whether or not it was picked up that I wasn't in attendance on the 10th of March and the 24th of March. Because Louise may have already picked it up, but the page has scrolled forward, so I just wanted to check. Yeah, so that, yeah. I wasn't here in attendance on the 24th either.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Any other questions or anyone else who wants to speak to the motion as it stands? There being none, I'll pass it back to councillor Parks, right of reply if you need it.
Yeah, just to say, Mayor, I guess there's no impact as far as receiving the minutes of workshops. So I still endorse what we've got on the table there. Thank you.
Very much. So again, as I practise, I'll ask if there are any abstaining voters. There are none recorded. Those against the motion, please show by raise of hand. Councillor Barwick against. And by extension, therefore, all those in favour, the remaining eight members of the council, councillor Keizer, sorry, seven members of the council, councillor Keizer, councillor Mason, councillor Brooks, councillor Baraklov, councillor Parks, councillor Harrison, councillor Micalletta. The motion is carried. Right. Item thirteen point two. Item thirteen point two, I just want to make a note that there is a typo presented in this motion as it's presented. And the typos occur on page thirty three in the options as well. It presents options one, two and three should read item motion three eighty five slash thirteen on all three points. And the officer's recommendation as presented at the bottom of page thirty three, item one should read, it rescinds the motion three eighty five thirteen, not three eighty five fifty. As I mentioned, the recommendation stands on the bottom of page thirty three to the top of page thirty four. This is a technicality. Do I have a mover for the motion as it stands?
Councillor Harris, I think, put his hand up, Mr. Mayor.
I didn't see it. I'm sorry, councillor Harris. Did you raise your hand as the mover?
That's affirmative, sir.
Thank you. And again, apologies. I'm looking at multiple things. I'm occasionally missing things, but thank you, Shane. Councillor Harris is our mover. Do I have a secondaire, please? Councillor Micalletta is our secondaire. Thank you. Councillor Harris.
I moved this out of deference for the amendments that had to be made. But this will be the last that I ever move that is presented on the same day as a meeting. And I will be moving the others back to a workshop. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Harris. Councillor Micalletta.
Nothing further to add, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Are there any speakers against the motion? Councillor Barwick.
Now, am I on line? You are, Shane. Thank you. Look, again, stand for. I have concerns that, and I look at it this way, we've had a rate payer that came to us with an issue that is a fact, an issue that we have to address ourselves. And I find it pretty sad that we suddenly are looking at changing the minutes of our way we do things. But having said that, under the regulations, it does say that the rate payer, if they want copies of our agendas, that they can get those at the end, at our meeting day. If they want an agenda, they can get our agenda. But my, another question I have concerns about is, are we going to still put the minutes up on the website of the council website, the same time as we as a council receive our minutes, which are to be seven, within seven days of our meeting being held under our operational plan? My question is, will they be going on the website at the same time as they do now or not?
So there's both speaking against the motion as well as a question in the same, as I record both. So through the chair to the general manager, would you care to respond?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Now, the resolution and the intent of the resolution is that the minutes will not be distributed to the public at the same time it is with council, whether it be via website or other means. The, as a resolution or the recommendation is written, is to give council laws the first opportunity of review of draft minutes prior to public, but no less than seven days after being first circulated to council. So it looks to put in place a process whereby council can first of all review its minutes prior to the public doing so, which the previous motion, which this report looks to rescind, didn't allow that to happen. It effectively made them released at both the same time. I believe councillor Barwick had her hand up.
Councillor Barwick, do you have a question?
Well, yes, and the question is that it's really a statement to the comment made by the general manager. And that is, we already have that right when we get our minutes now to go through our minutes. It's not going to mean that suddenly we're changing everything so that we can suddenly relook at them. We have that right now. When they come to us, it's up to every councillor to read them or not read them. And that statement sort of doesn't make a lot of sense to me because I read them.
Councillor Barwick, I'm going to issue you with a formal warning. You've spoken to the motion, you've asked a question, and now you're speaking to the motion again. And that's contrary to the meeting regulations. You're welcome to do that, but you must pose a question if you want to speak to it again. You're making a statement, effectively speaking to the motion. So I'm going to allow it because it's already out there, but just please just consider that as part of standard meeting procedures. Are there any other speakers to the motion, either for or against? There are none. And with that, I'll return to councillor Harris, who's the mover, right of reply.
Nothing further to add, Mayor.
Thank you very much. So as our process, our first ask, are there any abstaining voters? There are none. By show of hands, all those opposed to the motion. We have councillor Barwick. By extraction, therefore, the motion is carried, seven votes to one, those in favour being councillors Keizer, councillor Mason, councillor Brooks, councillor Baraklov, councillor Harris, councillor Parks, councillor Micalletta. The motion is carried. So having changed that operating process, the next logical step is item thirteen point three, which is the review of the delegations registered. And I will point everybody to the officer's recommendation in the printed copy at the bottom of page thirty nine. Items one, two, items one and two. For the motion as it stands, do I have a mover? I'll ask one more time for the motion as it stands. Do I have a mover? We have councillor Harris. Thank you very much as our mover. Do I have a secondaire for the motion as it stands?
I might, I might just warn you that I'm actually going to move this item to workshop to be dealt with. So that may affect the secondaire coming on board.
Okay. So since you've moved that prior to anybody else, then that is the motion that is standing, is to move this to workshop.
That's great.
Do I have a secondaire for that motion? I'm seeing hands, definitely one from Mr. Baraklov. Councillor Baraklov, can I record you as the secondaire? Thank you. Yes, that is, yes. So councillor Harris seconded by councillor Baraklov to move this item to workshop. Councillor Harris.
Again, this is evidence of a thing being brought to the council on the morning of a meeting. And we had discussed this previously at length and decided it was not a fair and just system because people didn't have time to question at length anything that they wanted to. And I believe we shouldn't be moving motions from, in an agenda that has been, the motion has been presented to workshop that morning. So I'll be doing the same with the next motion too. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Harris. Councillor Baraklov.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I agree with councillor House wholeheartedly here. We've done this numerous times. If you want us to review this, this type level of information, you need to be able to give us well in advance to present it first thing in the morning. Perhaps the meeting is simply not good enough. We've raised this numerous times, this quality of information to digest. So I agree with councillor House wholeheartedly on that one.
Thank you. I'm going to first go to councillor Parks, then to councillor Brooks. Councillor Parks.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a question through you to the general manager. Could we ask, is there any implications not reviewing this today? Is it time sensitive information that he feels that needs to be reviewed today?
No, I'll answer that question through you, Mr. Mayor, but also just take a point of clarification because I think what effectively has occurred is that councillor Harris has moved a procedural motion, which therefore, is it not a procedural motion? Which I thought was procedural. Yeah.
The meeting procedures basically say that the chair can either allow or disallow a defer.
So I just thought that would be worthy of point of clarification, if that's the case or not. But in response to councillor Parks' question, it's not necessarily time sensitive in this instance, what this has done. And I do want to point out that it has been subject to some conversation, although not specifically listed as a workshop item outside of this morning. In recent motions of council to sell land, for instance, the general manager and mayor were not empowered to execute contract without a second motion of council authorizing specifically to utilize a seal to implement a decision of council. That's what this particular report is seeking to do in one instance. In the second instance, it's seeking a delegation from a general manager to a relevant star or a relevant officer of council to be able to deal with right to information requests. As it stands at the moment, I'm the only officer with that delegation at present. And if there is a dispute or a complaint put up against any process that's been taken under the RTI Act, the only point of escalation at this point in time is external to the organisation. What this report seeks to do is give delegation so that general manager can in fact review any complaint against that process. In the first instance, prior to being referred to an external body such as the ombudsman. And I believe councillor Heather Barwick had her hand up again.
Councillor Barwick. Councillor Barwick, who can't hear you.
Councillor Brooks actually had a hand up before.
Sorry, you're actually quite right. I think I did do that. Sorry about that. Distracted. Councillor Brooks, let's go to you.
Can I continue?
Actually, councillor Brooks had raised her hand first. So I'm going to go to councillor Brooks first, then I'm going to
I had already started, Mr. Chairman.
No, but still councillor Brooks raised her hands prior to you raising yours, so she's next.
You don't see me. You're not seeing me.
Choice, no, isn't it? So she did have her hand raised prior to yours.
Okay, go for it.
Thank you, councillor Brooks.
In what may appear to be an episode of Yes Minister, I just actually am going to point out that I was going to ask exactly the question as councillor Parks. So over to councillor Barwick.
Thank you, councillor Brooks, councillor Barwick. Thank you, councillor Brooks, councillor Barwick.
Now. Am I going to get, I am mooted, am I on now? Okay. Section 20 refers to this as a procedural motion says, under number four, if the chairman of a meeting accepts a procedural motion, no discussion is to take place and the motion has to be put. Thank you.
Well, in that case, let's put the motion then, shall we? So we'll put the motion immediately to a vote as to whether or not we will accept the procedural motion to defer this to a workshop. So with that, I'll put it to a vote. Any abstaining voters? None are recorded. By show of hand, all those opposed to the motion. And remember, it's a procedural motion, so you're voting against the procedural motion to defer this. All those against the procedural motion.
How do I get rid of that hand? I'm not against. Thank you.
So councillor Mason is being the one who's opposed to the motion and councillor Keizer and councillor Parks against the motion. By extraction and councillor Brooks against the motion. Again, I'm just going to repeat that one more time. So those opposed to, opposed to the motion, we have councillor Mason, councillor Parks, councillor Keizer and councillor Brooks. So you have a dead heat, we have eight members. Yeah, I'm kind of. Hey, Shane, can you help us out here? We're going to have a dead draw.
I believe it's lost, the motion's lost.
Motion is lost, councillor Dawson is not here.
Okay, so the motion is then lost. So then, as the motion stands then, again, as it is written in item 13.3, do I have a mover for it as it is written? We have councillor Mason, who's moving. Thank you very much. Do I have a second for it as it is written? Councillor Parks, thank you very much. Councillor Mason, if you could speak to the motion.
I'd like to move the upper ship recommendation, one and two.
Thank you very much. Councillor Parks.
Yeah, I think probably the G M's really spoke to it in itself in regards of tidying up some things he believes that perhaps leave holes in the current policy or system that we have. And it's just, it's just due diligence to cover those gaps. So I don't see any reason or, you know, anything that might be of concern for myself for that. So I'm voting in favour to push that through. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Parks. I have speakers against the motion. We had a very quick pair of hands here from councillor Barwick.
I just want to ask a question here, Mr. Chairman. I'm just getting, the last, the motion was put and it was lost. Right now, and we're re-putting the same motion after it was lost, lost. I'm not sure that we can do that.
No, so the motion that was put was a motion by councillor Harris to defer the motion to workshop. That was put forward before the actual item 13.3 in its written form could be tabled. The motion to defer was lost. Now the motion as it is written, item 13.3 has been put to the table. We now have a mover from councillor Mason, we have a second from councillor Parks in its written form.
Thank you.
Do I have any speakers against the motion? Sorry, a little bit slow, sorry. Councillor Harris.
Two things, I'm not actually against the motion. I'm against the timing of the motion where it's been brought to us on the morning of a meeting. And it seems to have grown a little bit in habit because we've had them on a single basis previously, and now we seem to have three. I'd like to stem the habit and have people being able to research them for a period rather than three hours in the morning when we've got a whole heap, host of other things to get through as well. So I'm not actually against the motion, but I'm against the timing of the motion or the motion being put to council. And I'll try the same with the next one. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Harris. And I'll let everyone else speak and with, before I pass comment, councillor Barwick has raised her hand.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree with what councillor Harris is saying here, and I think it was a little bit disappointing that you as the chair, when it was a procedural motion, did allow other conversations to go on, which has now gone from a procedural motion being a motion that no further discussion. We put that motion to suddenly having council laws saying that what the general managers had, am I still muted? Okay, that what the general managers had has made them change, think a bit different. But to me, quite often, we get, I could say the same thing about the, the policy about the agendas for councillors. We never discussed that either, but that came to this table today and just went through. There was no discussion for us to be able to discuss it together. So no, I agree with councillor Harris. Let's start doing things the right way. That's what workshops are for. Thank you.
So again, I'm going to record you as having spoken to the motion. I think that that's pretty clear. I don't think there were any questions posed there, so thank you very much. Any other speakers for or against? Anyone else want to say anything? Councillor Brooks.
Thank you, ma'am. I'm supporting the motion because traditionally we have applied the policy as though it was inferred, and I really quite like how the G M is saying, no, I really want this to be clear and I want it outlined so that there can be no misinterpretation. And I quite respect that, so I'm supporting the motion.
Are there any other speakers to the motion? So I will speak to the motion. At the last workshop, the general manager did indicate that he was going to do this, although we didn't formally deal with the item in depth, he did indicate that this was one of the ramifications of that scenario where he couldn't actually conduct the business without another formal motion. So it was loosely, and I think that that's fair comment from councillor Harris, it's a worthwhile point. The other thing I'd pass, just as a sort of a blank acid test, is do we have the information that we require to make a determination in this case? And I would say with all motions, if more consideration is needed, more information is needed, or you don't have sufficient information to make an informed decision, by all means, pass it to workshop so you've got enough time to make a consideration. So I'm not necessarily comfortable with the blanket determination that we just don't make any decisions on anything that comes the day before. If it's appropriate or it's procedural, which clearly is the case this time, and I think you can get to a informed decision, I think that it's, it's good enough. Having said that, I'm going to make a note and comment to the general manager and say, look, it's a clear view from members of this council that we don't want to be doing this unless absolutely necessary. So let's really work on that so that we don't get to these situations again, because I think there is a valid view in the room, albeit that this time the circumstances, quite frankly, I think are reasonable. Any final speakers before I ask closing? There are none. So councillor Mason, write a reply to close.
I voted to pass this motion because all you're doing is double handling information. Now, there's two councillors already said that they would support the motion, just not the timing. So the process, we can revisit the process at the next workshop, but I'm moved to allow this one to pass today.
Thank you very much. With that, we'll put it to a vote. Any abstaining voters, please raise your hand. There being none, I will also, I'll now ask by show of hands, all those opposed to the motion. We have councillor Barwick opposed to the motion. By extraction, therefore, the motion is carried, seven to one, all those in favour being councillor Keizer, councillor Barraclough, councillor Brooks, councillor Harris, councillor Miccaletta, councillor Parks, councillor Mason, the motion is carried. That moves us then inextricably to what this is all about, which is item 13.4, which is a review of the use of the seal policy. And again, if you have the printed pack at the bottom of page 42, you will notice recommendation one and two from the council officers. Do I have a mover for the motion in its current written form? Councillor Parks, thank you very much. Do I have a second?
I'll be moving as it's written. Thanks, ma'am.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Do I have a second for it as a councillor Mason? Thank you very much. Councillor Parks.
Thank you, ma'am. As you alluded to, this is really attached to the other motions, so I think we've probably debated it already. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councillor Mason.
Nothing to add, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do I have any speakers against the motion? Councillor Barwick.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's like the motion before, we've already approved this under the review of delegation of the registration because in that document, the cap was before the horse. But having said that, this policy here that's in front of us now, it uses the word, note, the attached draft policy has been amended with an assumption that council has resolved to approve the red delegation register as presented. Note, this report presumes endorsement by council of the officer's recommendation contained in within agenda item 13.4, but technically should be 13.3. What's going on? Have you turned me up, Shane?
No, you're still, you're still live.
It just sounds a lot louder. So, I mean, I've always had concerns and the reason about I vote against the hand. The seal is something that, everything comes to council. We usually say that the mayor and general manager has the right to use the seal with the permission of the council. I'm all been a bit dubious about handing over the seal since a decision of this council was made some time back not to seal a deal with the Crown Land and that and the general manager and that one of our mayors did ignore what that council had said and signed a deal for a 10 year agreement that this council had said, we don't want that at all. And that's why I'm, I, I, I just don't feel good about handing the seal over. And I feel worse about handing the seal over when we've addressed the delegation with this seal item already in the delegation. So you can't say no to the seal because you've already given it in item 133. Thank you.
Thank you. There was a question posed there, so through the chair, I'll ask the general manager, do you want to respond to that?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I need to say that what councillor Barwick has brought up in her reply with regard to a presumption being made within this report, it would have been the officer's recommendation, should the previous item or the preceding item not have been endorsed by council to have this one deferred or not considered at all, because they are intricately related, if we can spit that out. And all this report is now simply seeking to do is to update the policy in accordance with the delegation register as you have now moved to approve. I'll see councillor Brooks.
Thank you, councillor Brooks.
Thank you, ma'am. The question that I had, actually, the general manager just touched on, the difference between the use of rescinding and amending. So traditionally, what we would do is have a range of policies that come to us for updating and amending, and they contain this, they keep the same number and they are still the same policy. So my question is, why are we rescinding policy number 25 and creating a new policy number 26 rather than just amending policy number 25?
Through the chair to the general manager.
Thank you, councillor Brooks. No specific reason from my end, and I'm happy to take on board your recommendations with regard to making amendment to the current policy and retain its, its, its original number. I don't know.
All right. There any other speakers? Anyone else like to comment, ask a question? Councillor Harris.
So we've just had a presentation from the new chair of the N T D C prior to having a vote on a pecuniary interest that he may well have in our approving the changes to the document and approving the ongoing support. Is that correct?
No.
You sure?
No.
Yeah, through the chair, Mr. Mayor, the, the, the CEO did present to council obviously this morning at council's workshop. The CEO of N T D C, I should say, the presentation relates more specifically to an agenda item to be considered later in the agenda in which council will be requesting, oh, sorry, officers requesting councils authorization to enter into a three year agreement with N T D C. That agreement will require use of the seal as is presented in the agenda, but it's certainly not a pecuniary interest from the CEO of N T D C himself or that entity. Should also add that under current delegation, the general manager has allegation to execute contracts and agreements on behalf of council.
Any further questions, statements? All right, I will return to councillor Parks, write a reply to close.
Thanks, ma'am. Just to, I guess, looking at a couple of councillors' comments, I believe the, the procedure that we followed is correct. We need to adjust the delegated authority first and then have the policy reflect that. So I'm comfortable that we have moved in the right direction. Also appreciating the fact that deputy mayor's comments around having items come before is, on the day of the meeting is noted for myself. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Parks. With that, we'll put this to a vote. By show of hands, any abstaining voters today? None. By show of hands, all those against the motion. We have councillor Barwick and councillor Barraclough. By extraction, the vote is carried, six to two, those in favour being Mayor Keizer, councillor Brooks, councillor Harris, councillor Miccaletta, councillor Parks, councillor Mason, the motion is carried. The next item on the agenda is item 13.5, the Northern Thames Main Development Corporation Members Agreement for 2020 through 2023. We'll note the officer's recommendation on page 48, items one, two and three, for the motion as it is written, do I have a mover? Councillor Barwick is moving. Thank you. Do I have a second?
No, Mr. Chairman, I'm not moving as it is written. That's only a recommendation here there. I would like to move. It's going to be funny to sound, but I'd like to move an adjournment motion for this item. But as we are all over the place, it's living in different areas or sitting at different rooms at the moment, it's impossible to have an adjournment motion, but I will move that this draft members agreement 2020 to 2023, return to the next general meeting of this council, so all documents can be read for an informed decision to be made after the reading of the three annexures that have been excluded from this report. Thank you.
Councillor Barwick, I accept that that is a procedural moment, procedural motion. Councillor Barwick, I accept that that is a procedural moment, procedural motion to defer. So on that basis, we'll immediately put that to vote. Who wants to defer the motion? So all those.
Second, man.
I need a second. That is correct. Thank you. I need a second for that motion to defer. We have councillor Harris as the second. I don't believe we need to have arguments beyond what you presented, councillor Barwick. Am I correct in that? We can just put this straight to a vote. That's right. We do.
Thank you.
So all those who are, so that's back one. All those who are abstaining from voting on this deferment motion by show of hands, there are none. All those who are against this procedural deferment motion by show of hands, please raise your hand. There is only one, Mayor Keizer. Therefore, the deferment motion is carried 7 to 1 by councillors Brooks, councillor Barrow, councillor Harris, councillor Barwick, councillor Parks, councillor Micaletto and councillor Mason. So item 13.5 will therefore be deferred to, to both workshop and to the next council meeting following the points raised. Item 13.6 on the agenda is the third quarter performance review, performance report, which covers the period, the first of January 2020 to the 30th of March 2020. The recommendation is presented on page 50, recommendations one and two. Do I have a mover for the recommendations as they stand? Councillor Micaletto, do I have a second? Do I have a second for the report as it stands? Councillor Mason, thank you very much. Councillor Micaletto.
Yeah, thank you, man. I think it's pretty straightforward. It's what we're, we're looking for and therefore I would like to accept it.
Thank you, councillor Micaletto. Councillor Mason, anything to add?
Nothing to add, mate. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Mason. Any speakers against the motion? Councillor Harris.
Again, we'll take note that the, the thing was presented this morning as were the previous five agenda items. So there is a pattern developing. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Harris. Duly noted. Any speakers for or questions to the motion? Councillor Brooks.
Thank you, Mayor. I have to agree with councillor Harris on this one. There's so much information in this report that really it's not done justice without taking it to a workshop. Yeah, so I'm going to agree with councillor Harris on this matter.
Yeah. Duly recorded. Those views are valid without a doubt. All right, there being councillor Barwick.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. This report just says to receive the quarterly report. That's all they're asking us to do here is to receive it. So we're going to receive it, but I agree with councillor Harris and councillor Parks. We need, there's quite a few things in this report that questions probably need to be asked. And then when it goes to the table, those questions can be answered and asked in front of the gallery. So they hear the questions that, it's like happened to me at the last council meeting. I wanted to ask questions for the rate payer, but I had got shut up. So I think that it's received this report, which I'm going to do. But we need to treat it with a little bit more respect around the workshop table. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Barwick. Any further speakers, questions? There being none, I'll refer to, I'll return to councillor Micaletto to close.
Yeah, I think councillor Barwick hit the nail on the head. We are just receiving the report.
Thank you, councillor Micaletto. Councillor Harris has a question. I think it motions. Can I accept a question if the motion is closed? I don't think I can. Sorry, councillor Harris. We have to put that to a vote. We'll move on to voting.
The only question I wanted to ask was procedural. It was if we receive it, is that meaning we're approving it?
No, seems to be the response. So let me just repeat for the audio record. In fact, let's just do this properly. So through the chair to the general manager, would you care to respond?
I think he was to me. Now, the report simply asks council to receive the report as presented. It's not requesting a decision from council to endorse or adopt or approve or authorize. Simply receive the report as presented.
Thank you very much. All right, with that, I believe we can put this to a vote. So firstly, let's record any abstaining voters. There are none. All those opposed to the motion by show of hands, please raise your hand. Councillor Harris. Councillor Brooks. By extraction, the motion is therefore carried 622, those in favor being councillor Keizer, councillor Barrow, councillor Barwick, councillor Parks, councillor Micaletto and councillor Mason. The motion is carried. Thank you very much. Item 13.7, and I'm sure, yes, councillor Brooks, I have a hand.
Am I able to move a motion from the floor at this point? Related to that item, because we really didn't resolve that we want to, you know, that we, we should really discuss quarterly reports at a workshop rather than just get given them and then not really have opportunity to explore further.
It seems reasonable. I can't see why we wouldn't allow that. Yeah, let's do it.
Great. So my motion is then that all quarterly reports in the future are brought to a workshop prior to being presented at the council meeting for discussion.
So I'm going to call that 13.62. So we'll look at Louise typing it up. Thank you, Louise. And then I've got a couple of other questions moving on there. Should we first record it, guys, before we move? Let's just do this in flight again. Some everyone's patience while we get the hang of this. Councillor Harris, I think you were first.
I'll second in the motion.
Ah, you're second in the motion. Okay, good. That's good. I think the parks was also waving. Were you waving at me, Peter? No. Okay, so let's just.
I think we're all just trying to second it.
Yes, I think that's the general vibe. Okay, thank you very much, councillor Harris. So we have the mover being councillor Brooks. Thank you. Councillor Brooks, are you happy with the motion as it's typed up by Louise on the left?
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I think that that captures the essence of it as well. Councillor Harris, you seem to have a question.
Thank you. Yeah, prior to the next, at the next available meeting after the workshop. Presented to workshop for discussion prior to the next available meeting for his presentation. Something like that. Would that be okay, councillor Brooks?
That's fine, councillor Harris.
Thank you.
So.
Mr Mayor, through you, if we could just clarify, councillor Harris, are you moving to, are you trying, are you seeking amendment to the motion as put by councillor Brooks?
Yes, and she's accepted. Yes, and she's accepted that.
Can we just then clarify how that motion is then to read? And just give Louise, can you reiterate what that change is, please?
That all future quarterly reports be presented to a workshop for discussion prior to presentation at next available meeting.
At the next council meeting.
Available council meeting, yes.
Yes, okay.
It's a meeting, not a workshop.
Yeah, so the intent is that we publish the report. It then goes to workshop for discussion. Then we take it to a general, a general council meeting where we then table it for acceptance and we answer any specific councillor question. Again, very reasonable. I think that's a good motion.
I realize this is unusual times because we only had a meeting a week before the, the, the workshop a week before the meeting and another one in the morning of. So had it been a fortnight before, which is normally the case, then we probably would have had time to digest and ask any relevant questions.
No, thank you. I think it's quite constructive, actually. Okay, councillor Brooks, are you happy with it as it reads?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And I'll just speak to it then, just to say, I mean, this is really interesting stuff. And this is where our staff get to celebrate how much work they've done. And this is where we get to pull apart some of the projects that we're interested in. So I definitely think it needs a little bit more attention. I mean, the report itself must take ages to pull together to just pass through a council meeting in five seconds. It's like preparing a gourmet meal and it's wolfed down in, you know, 10 seconds flat. It needs more attention, is what I'm saying.
Councillor Harris, you want to comment on that gourmet question?
Yes, absolutely. Anytime she wants to prepare a gourmet meal, I'll go over and wolf it down in less than 10 seconds. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything, any comments as the second?
No, I think my support has been given and councillor Brooks's comments are exactly on the mark.
I think it's well understood. Any speakers against? I'll open it up to speakers for, against, any questions, anything? Yes, firstly councillor Micaletto.
Thanks, man. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I guess the advantage or the only advantage I can see here is it basically gives us the opportunity of speeding things up because we can actually then at the next council meeting receive and endorse. Is that correct? Or we still can only receive?
You can still always only receive, but you can at least ask questions in the public domain. Did you want to comment on that, Marat?
Absolutely, Mr Mayor. We will still only be ever seeking for it to be received with the exception of the annual performance report, in which case would be seeking council resolution to endorse that.
Thank you. Councillor Barwick has a hand raised. Councillor Barwick.
Mr Chairman, I think this report came through a motion from myself quite some time back and was taken to a workshop. And it never ever really came back from, my motion never came back to the table all those months back. But the motion that I had up was that it would become a part of the agenda document when it went into the agenda every three months, not as an attachment. And I think councillor Micaletto seconded that motion for me. So as long as it goes in the body of the agenda, not as an attachment, it is easier to find and, and go through it page by page. But I quite agree with councillor, councillor Brooks's motion from the floor.
Thank you. All right, that being said, I'll hand it back to councillor Brooks to close.
Thank you, Mayor. No, no additional comments to add. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll put that to a vote. Any abstaining voters by show of hand? All those opposed to the motion by show of hand? There being none, the motion is carried unanimously 8 to 0. So and I've recorded that one as 13.62. Louise, I don't know how you're recording that one.
Yeah, that's why I said that.
Okay, totally. Okay, that leads us to what I believe is the most substantial. All these items are important, but I think in terms of community expectation, item 13.7 certainly is the one that covers the greatest degree of gravity because it deals with the council's response to COVID-19. And this is item 13.7, the proposed Community Care and Recovery Package for the COVID-19 pandemic, which is, I'd like to assure everybody from the community, this has certainly been widely discussed and has had a substantial amount of input and planning and consideration from both the council as well as a raft of council employees in preparing this proposal. We'll get through to some of the detail, but I'll note on page 58 of the written notes, there is the recommendation, item one and item two from council officers that relates to the notes. Do I have for the motion as it is written? And then we have councillor Dawson, who has returned. Thank you very much, councillor Dawson. So Louise, please, can we just reflect the minutes to note that we have a full council present again? So I have a mover in councillor Harris, who's moving the motion as it stands. And I, I also have a show of hands from councillor Barwick.
I would like to make a comment, if I may, Mr Chairman. You refer to motions each time you go through to your next item. They're not, it is a recommendation from the staff. It becomes a motion when it is moved by a councillor. Thank you.
Mayor, can I ask, is councillor Harris moving as written?
Yes, councillor Harris is moving it as written.
Then I'll second that.
Correct. Councillor Parks is the second. Councillor Harris.
Thank you for that second, councillor Parks. Yeah, look, I believe this to be possibly, or hopefully, the worst-case scenario that we can have. That said and done, we're not sure how long this will go on for and we're not sure if this will be the end of it, but we can live in hope. And, and this is the extent of it. I think it's a fairly responsible package and addresses quite a lot of the angst that is within the community currently. In saying that, I do hope that it finishes sooner rather than later. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Harris. Councillor Parks.
Thank you, man. Yeah, I'd like to congratulate the general manager and his team putting this together. I think it's quite unprecedented for council, a local government, to be delving in these areas which you'd normally expect state or federal government to be right there on the ground with these things. But I think it is a really good thing to local government to be doing, knowing that we're possibly pushing ourselves into deficit deficit, or we will be doing because of these measures if they're fully expanded. And I do have a question through you, Chair, to the general manager, and I'm sure his team has considered all these individual packages within the motion that we, is before us. Is that some, some of the, the grants and the rate remissions and so forth are aimed at small business owners? Has the general manager, and I'm sure he has, considered that some of those business owners are not actually the owner of the building? I understand that landlords are business people too and they need assistance. But is there measures and balances in place that would actually protect or assist those conducting businesses?
Thank you. Chair to the general manager.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Yeah, point taken. And what, what this care package looks to do is to apply the hardship policy, which has already been endorsed by council, which is specific to any customer or rate payer, I should say, under any rating classification who can demonstrate hardship, to be given a deferral interest-free and penalty-free for a period of time. So that's regardless of their circumstance or category. Secondly, what it proposes is a 0% increase, increase across the board. And we know that state government and others have been advocating through various bodies that any savings are passed down to tenants. And we'll certainly be making sure that we continue our liaison with local government, association of Tasmania, state government and other bodies to ensure that occurs. The grants programs themselves. The grants programs themselves are presented in a broad manner to council today in terms of budgetary allocation and high-level intent. The administration of those grants will be subject to further, you know, council discussions at workshop and potentially another decision of council, should it feel it necessary for the administration of those funds.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, I'll ask, are there any movers against, anybody who wants to speak against the motion?
Sorry, sorry, Mayor. We haven't had the other people speak tonight. You haven't actually speak to them?
No, correct. So we had, we've had the mover and the second to.
Yeah.
Slight irregularity was that councillor Parks, in his seconding address, actually also posed a question. So having concluded the mover and the second to, I'm now, as usual, opening up to take people who are speaking against the motion as a priority. Then I'll open it up to four or questions posed to the question. And we had a show from councillor Barwick to speak against the motion. Councillor?
No, no, not really speak against it. I want to ask a question. I mean, yes, I do want to ask a question. I noticed, Mr. Chairman, it says that we are going to have to look at, or it's anticipated that we're going to have to have an additional general rate increase of at least $230,000 to do this. So what I want to ask here is that this part of the recommendation from the officers, does that include removal of the assessed annual, the AAR rating that we have on the certified certifications of areas of our municipality?
Through the chair to the general manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for your question, councillor Barwick. There is, this motion by no means seeks to change council's rating methodology or strategy. So its current rating methods will still stand. All this motion is seeking to do is have a 0% rate rise across all categories and a number of initiatives throughout the entire package listed, one through to nine. So no change in rating methodology or strategy at all for this financial year or for the proposed financial year of 2021.
And just for sake of completeness to anybody who's listening into the recording of this meeting, the proposed $230,000 of extra rates is to be factored in over a five-year period. So it may sound large, but the timing schedule is quite generous. Any other questions or speakers for or against the motion? Councillor Brooks.
Thank you, Mayor. We are in a unique situation where ordinarily, if we were to, as individual councillors voting on this, if we were to obtain a financial gain, if you like, or savings, we would ordinarily issue a beginning interest. But have we got any legal advice either, or what's happened at other councils? To just, for anyone watching really, we are voting for the greater good for the whole community, obviously not just for our own gain. But I just wondered if we'd had any sort of more formal official advice on councillors voting on no increased rates situation.
Thank you, councillor Brooks. And I'll pose that one to the GM, but I will add to the record that there has been some discussion around potential or perceived conflicts of interest. This being a very general and broad one that would apply to every member of our community. The pervasive view is that none do present themselves and therefore none have been recorded. But I will pass to the general manager, for sake of completeness, to formally respond. And again, credit to you councillor Brooks, a very valid question.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, councillor Brooks. We have not sought specific legal advice as to the motions and their implications presented to council today. What we have done is applied the same level of thinking with regard to conflict of interest as we would with any budget we put in front of council, which recommends zero rate increases, well, sorry, zero rate increases or otherwise, where it doesn't only impact councils as ratepayers, but also the entire rate base of its community. So I understand and am aware of other councils that have had motions to implement care packages which have specific rate relief or remission for specific categories in which some of those councillors themselves in small communities may have had a conflict. But I don't believe that is the case in this instance.
Another question?
Just to reply, if I may, and for the record for anyone again watching later, it would be correct to indicate that the Premier or certainly the Minister for Local Government has tabled an expectation or a encouragement for the councils to follow this line of decision-making.
Thank you.
That be correct?
Yeah, that is due. That is correct, correct. Councillor Dawson.
Sorry, trying to track down the mute button. Yeah, I think any situation that requires us to have a rethink, like COVID has, and we find ourselves in a situation where we deliver a 0% rate increase. The position that council would have been in pre-COVID was looking fairly promising financially. And we were looking like we're in a pretty good position. I think it's come from, as councillor Brooks mentioned, whether the Premier or Minister for Local Government's expectations on all councils is that they'll end up wearing in deficit this year. And I think as distasteful as that is for this council that we've worked so hard to get ourselves into the black, shows that, you know, we've all got to step up and this is our chance to give that little bit back. And let's hope that in the future, we can get ourselves back into the black again on the back of this stuff.
Thank you. Thank you, councillor Dawson. And I'll just note that I think Cheryl Hyde, our manager of corporate services and finance, I think she had an existential crisis preparing a deficit budget. My empathy and sympathy goes out to you, Cheryl. But yes, this is, this is not a trivial piece of work by any stretch of the imagination, always trying to achieve that balance between being empathetic to the members of our community who may well already or may well in the near future be doing it quite tough as a consequence of the circumstances surrounding us, as well as making sure that we protect the future of the council. By getting that balance right has not been taken lightly. It has been extensively researched, debated, discussed, as well as a lot of lead has been taken from the local government association of Tasmania as a sector-based response. And we're supporting those actions. We feel that they're appropriate. And I personally think, I want to commend both the local government association as well as all the members of our council staff in preparing a thoroughly thought-through, well-articulated and I believe well-balanced response to the situation. All right, any final comments or questions? There being none, I'll return to deputy mayor Harris as the mover for writing reply.
Thank you, Mayor. Firstly, I'd like to congratulate Shane and his team for being the first local government body in the country to have a COVID policy. Congratulations for that. There's probably an award coming somewhere. We'll get another trip out of this.
Can I just, I'm not actually sure that's a fact for the record, that we are the first and only in the country. I just wanted to make that clear, but certainly one of the first within the state anyhow.
Well, we're not the only in the country, but we certainly are the first. We'll go with that. Yes, look, we're, we're in for a little bit of a tough time. Congratulations to Cheryl on crossing that border into deficit willingly, maybe not. But there may be some use for some of our investment savings to get us back into the black at some stage so that we can actually operate normally thereafter. But yeah, I'd commend this, this program and certainly hope it doesn't last as long as we think it might. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Harris. Under that, with no further ado, we'll put this one to a vote. Any abstaining voters by show of hand? There being none, all those opposed to the motion as it stands by show of hands, please. There are none. The motion is carried unanimously. Thank you very much, council. That's a strong show of strength and unity. Item 13.7 is passed. Item 14, petitions, there are none. Item 15, notices of motions, there are none. Item 16, item 16.1, the Beachwood community shed and barbecue area. And I will point everybody to.
Mr. Chairman, prior to that, number 16, which is questions without notice, if you look at your index, from councillors. 16-point councillors' questions without notice taken on notice from previous meeting. We have nowhere, that is the only area that I can bring up questions without notice to this meeting. And I have some to bring forward, if I may.
No, absolutely. You always may. That's part of the process. Hold on a second. Let me just gather my thoughts here.
Thank you.
Sorry, Meg, if I can just interrupt and say that in the hard copy, there is nothing on the page related to that and there's the first page of 16.1 is missing.
I said that. I made a comment. There's nowhere for.
I think.
But 16.1 is a community shed and there's not the first page on that either. It's on the hard, on the computer copy, but not on the hard copy in here.
You're quite right. So I'm looking now at the digital version, excuse me, which refers to page 16. 15 is notice of motions. And that's page 60. So on page 61, we then have councillors' questions without notice taken on notice from a previous ordinary jet council meeting. So that is quite correct. Then we go to 16.1, which is the Beachwood community shed and barbecue area. So.
That is exact, that is what I did say. There is no room for questions from councillors is not mentioned in here.
Thank you.
So that's why I'm asking if I can bring these questions forward. You don't have to answer them now, but I just need to bring them forward. And I have spoken to the general manager that I was going to do this. Development of 139 Hillwood Main Road. I went and, I had a phone call over the Easter and went and visited that green belt down there. The devastation that I seen there is, I could understand why the ratepayers down there are so upset. But I believe that as a council, we set a permit on what was to happen with that great bell down there. I have given a copy of the picture for the general manager to do which what he wants to do with. But I think as a council, we need to look at that. Number two, the Weymouth Progress Association, they received a grant for $15,000 from Mast, paid to the Georgetown Council to have an engineer's report done on the Trevor Street boat ramp section. Now, I have spoken with the Weymouth group and they said that Mast were not happy with the proposal they received. And my question is, is it correct that Mast are engaging another consultant and are asking for a contribution from that council? After the Weymouth Progress did a grant and got $15,000 towards it. The other third question, which comes out of the motions of the councillors' motion list is in the Capital Works, item 1557, which is Hillwood. We've been asking for the last five years that I can think of about rezoning or getting the land that the football ground is sitting on, which is part of Crown Land. And we've been, all it keeps saying is waiting on Crown Land. Now, I'm very dubious if it was ever been passed forward to the Crown Land because I don't think they take that long to, five years to look at transferring a little bit of a land to the Georgetown Council, which is not a lot. And I feel that that one needs to be brought forward and checked out in the agenda. Also, in the Capital Works, sorry, not Capital Works, councillors' motion 07115 and 07215, light industrial subdivision. It says in there that, and I'm asking if council can have a report, come to a workshop to update councillors on the draft Bell Bay structure plan. This has been going for four years, oh, five years now. And 17215 includes South Street extensions. We just, as a council, we've got that sitting there. I know that everyone's working with Bell Bay, but I think as a council, we've got them sitting there. We need to have, be updated, know where we are with that. They're the only things I've got for questions without notice. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, can we just seek clarification from councillor Barwick for question one? As you'll appreciate, there was a bit of a preamble to the question. So if we could just capture councillor Barwick's question number one a bit more succinctly.
On what?
Your first question that you raised about the Hillwood vegetation and planning permits.
What would you like me to update you on?
Well, just to clarify, what is the question specifically? Are you asking how does council enforce vegetation protection under a planning permit?
Yeah, yes.
And specifically to the Hillwood estate?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And, and there was another 105 that we said had to have trees put up as a vegetation cover. And that's not been done either. Thank you.
So while Louise is recording that, I have a question from councillor Harris.
Yeah, I just wanted to know what the address of the first part of that first question was. Was it 139?
Yep.
139?
Yep. Bacon, it's lane, a bush lane on Hillwood Main Road.
Well, doesn't look terribly tree. There's 171 back to 127 and there's not a lot of trees in between.
Shane's got that.
This would be a Google map. It wouldn't be yesterday, I can tell you.
If I can suggest to just councillor Harris, we give council, the general manager, a chance to take these questions on notice and reply by the next council meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Barwick. Much appreciated. All right, which leads us then back to item 16.1, the Beachwood community shed and barbecue area. Now, for those of you who've got the printed pack, you're missing the first page. So you need to go to the digital pack and the digital pack, the page number is 63. It's consistent with the written pack because you only have page 64 in the written pack. So in the digital one, if you go to 63, you'll see the page that's missing.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, my hard copy is showing page 62, a general item 16.1.
So Myers, we're missing that one entirely. We have a question from councillor Barwick.
Mr. Chair, are we doing 16.1? I would like.
Not yet. We're directing everybody to the pages and so that they all know what they're looking at. So just pause for a second.
Thank you.
All right. So by this stage, I'm going to assume that everybody has got both a copy of the digital page, page 62, so you know what you're looking at.
Yep.
And for those of you who are following on paper, you've sort of got a combination of the two, digital page 62. Then you go on to page 60.
May I, may I, Mr. Mayor?
Facing a blank.
May I, Mr. Mayor, just to clarify for the benefit of all, both the digital and hard copies. both the, um, digital and hard copies appear to be, um, the same. What has occurred is a formatting error, which is giving you a blank page on number 63. Um, but the report, um, continues from 62 to through to 64. So you'll see presented within the body of it are the questions, question two, question three and question four, and it goes into the, uh, answering of it. So there's, it's simply a formatting error in the body of the report, which is giving you a blank page at 63 is what I can see.
Not quite. Close, but not quite. So yes, the 63, we're actually seeing it as blank. You're quite right. But 62 is missing in its entirety.
Now, Mr. Chairman, it is in the attachments actually. At the back have the pieces of the, uh, finish of this document is in the attachments at the back. But, um.
Anyway, I believe we can get there, guys. I think.
Yeah, I'd like to move if I may, Mr. Chairman. And that is that the Beechford and Community Shed and Barbecue area report be further discussed at the next workshop of council.
Right. Okay. Well, that's your motion.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, uh, Louise, can you first make a, record that?
Want me to say it again? Uh, that the Beechford and Community Shed and Barbecue area report be further discussed at the next workshop of council.
Okay, that looks fine. And then the mover is councillor Barwick. And then the seconder, we have councillor Dawson. Is that correct? Councillor Dawson, are you seconding? Councillor Dawson is seconding, correct.
Mr. Chairman, uh, look, this is, uh, this report, uh, I read it. I followed, couldn't work out where the rest was, but I found that. But I believe this is a report that needs to go to the councillors to have a big, um, discussion about it. Because it says one thing in one part, uh, it gives us a direction. Um, it says you can do this or you can't do that, or we can leave this and we can do that. I think that as a council, uh, we need to sit around the table, decide what we're going to do with it and how it is, and come up with it at the next council meeting.
Thank you, councillor Barwick. Um, councillor Dawson.
I suppose, um, I don't know enough about it. Let's wait a second. Um, I can read what's there in, um, the office's recommendation, um, and brief. Um, there's quite a bit there, um, that I'd like to understand. And I, and I just can't get my head around which direction we're actually trying to take here. Are we trying to, uh, go to, get to a point where the shed's out there, become a new memorial hall for them, that kind of a community hall? Or, uh, and what does that mean? What do the different recommendations mean? I personally, I don't understand from my own side of the information. So I think pretty logical to take it to a workshop and, and just go over it again. I'd like to understand if you can construct on any.
So the.
If there is, then, um, maybe through the.
Thank you.
Is there anything? Or I'm not sure.
Well, the way that I'm interpreting this is this is a motion to defer. So it's procedural. So, um, councillor Dawson, I'm assuming that you're happy to stand then as the seconder for the procedural motion. Is that correct?
Yes.
But with that, we'll put this to a vote. All those who are against the motion to defer, please by show of hands. Mayor Keas is the only one recorded against the motion is carried. H21, the motion is deferred. Moving on. Item 17, council committee reports, there are none. Is that right? Don't be, uh, yeah, I suppose that makes sense given the circumstances. Item 18, moving into closed session. Do I have a move?
Yes.
Councillor Parks and then followed by councillor Mason. Councillor Parks.
Uh, nothing to say, thanks.
Councillor Mason.
Sure.
Anybody got anything to say? Questions? They'll put that one straight to a vote. All those in favor of the motion.
All those in favor. You're changing it.
Today, he's changing it. Sorry, I'm being inconsistent. All those in favor. We have everyone. So that is unanimous. Uh, councillor Barrack, you were in favor? Good. Thank you. Motion is unanimous.
Uh, councillors, uh, given that you've just moved to move into closed meeting, I'll now, um, just let you know that I'm pausing recording of the meeting.
4:19 Louise and unanimous.
Mr. Mayor, just to let you know that following that decision to move out to closed meeting, I have now recommenced, uh, recording.
Thank you very much. Uh, the meeting is now, um, in the public domain. And with that, there being no further business, uh, the meeting is closed at 4:20 PM. Thank you very much, council. I want to thank each and all of you for your patience in adopting these new processes and new meeting procedures. And thank you to the broader Georgetown community for falling in line with, uh, our public question time so that we can stay compliant with the COVID-19 regulations. Thank you very much. Until next month. Have a great month. Thank you much, much obliged.